All right, we'll work on it. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Fruta City Council meeting. We're going to go ahead and call a meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counselor Buck, here. Counselor Lenhart, here. Counselor Harvey, here. Counselor Cry, here. Counselor O'Brien, here. Counselor Breaman, here.
All right, if you'd all please stand with us to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. There is one thing I'd like to add to the consent agenda, and that would be appointing Julie Lynch to our Planning Commission. And so that would be the only thing I have. Do you have anything else, Deb, that you would like to add to that?
No other changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as amended, or the agenda as amended.
Second.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we've got one proclamation and one presentation tonight. So our first item is a proclamation proclaiming August 2nd to 8th as the Fourth Annual Interfaith Awareness Week in the city of Fruta. It's going to be accepted by Carlene Goldwaith. And she's a representative for the Grand Valley Interfaith Network. So I've asked Heather to read that for us tonight.
Whereas the city of Fruta honors and respects all religious beliefs, cultures, creeds, and races, and is recognized as an inclusive city defined in the November 20th, 2018 Inclusivity Proclamation, and seeks to learn from those who believe that equal spiritual opportunity and human rights belong to every citizen. And whereas various statistical sources calculate that there are between 4,000 and 5,000 different religions in the world, and that the city of Fruta and Mesa County are home to a number of such different paths, faith paths. And whereas that there are three or more interfaith organizations currently operating in Fruta and Mesa County, and are offering varied programs designed to bring more faith groups into dialogue together to discuss and better practice peace, harmony, cooperation, and understanding among all people. And whereas the Grand Valley Interfaith Network has been networking together to support the constructive activities of local interfaith operations in Mesa County since 1977. And whereas many Fruter faith groups have partnered with the Grand Valley Interfaith Network to create a series of activities and events in the days and weeks leading up to Interfaith Awareness Week, to be followed by days of individual reflection on connection and peace, which is open to all people of any faith, including those who are not affiliated with any faith. And whereas these ongoing activities of harmony among, the ongoing activities of harmony among a diversity of faiths is a vital goal for all people throughout Fruta, North America, and the world. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council for the city of Fruta, on behalf of citizens of Fruta, proclaims the first week of August 2021 to be Interfaith Awareness Week in the city of Fruta. Furthermore, the city of Fruta hereby intends to annually recognize the importance of all beliefs in the community, and to consider, respect, and value the uniqueness and importance of religious diversity in our community.
Thank you, Heather. Carlene, do you want to say a few words?
All right. I'm Dr. Carla Ryan, I'm the president of Grand Valley Interfaith Network. Thank you, members of the Fruta Council, for presenting this proclamation to the community on behalf of Given. In these times of ongoing pandemic caution and economic hardship, it's easy to blame others for our difficulties. However, it's important for us to remember that we all have a responsibility and a choice about how and what we create as our future, both as a community and as individuals. We have a choice about how we think and a responsibility for our actions, no matter our challenges. We have a choice about the work we do, and are responsible for how we handle the fruits of our labors. We have a choice about what God we pray to, or none at all. The proclamation of Interfaith Awareness Week is important in that it reminds us of the many religions available to us in Fruta and in the Grand Valley, and the choices we get to make in our pursuit of spiritual growth and religious freedom. All religions teach love. All offer a path to spiritual enlightenment and growth. All provide hope for the soul's journey toward a greater expression of life. There are so many faiths in the world. If you were to explore them one by one, you would discover that they have more in common than you might realize. We encourage everyone to join Given in respecting the differences and celebrating the similarities. In times of confusion and fear, having faith, a religion, a spiritual discipline, can be the guiding light we seek toward a brighter future. Desmond Tutu said, "Hope is being able to see that there is a light despite all of the darkness." Whatever religion you follow, we are all children of that divine creative energy called life. We are all one human family. Thank you again for recognizing that religious diversity adds to the richness of our communities.
Thank you, Carla. Did you want to come up and give the proclamation? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You do.
Thank you.
You're a samurai.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to our presentation. We've got SGM Engineering Consulting and Surveying, and Mesa County will give a presentation on the total maximum daily load assessment for Colorado River.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Kimberly Bullen, Public Works Director for City of Fruta. Tonight, we're joined by Carrie Gudorf, Mesa County's Regulatory Programs Manager, who manages the city of Fruta's MS4 permit for stormwater. And on the screen is Angie Fowler from SGM. She's their Water Services Sector Leader, and they're going to give you a brief presentation on some of the issues we're talking about as it relates to the total maximum daily load assessment. So I'll turn it over to Carrie.
Hello. So I won't bore you too much. TMDLs and water quality, it's really exciting. So thanks for having me tonight. We're going to just give you a quick recap where we're at and what has recently changed with our TMDL. So like Kimberly said, TMDL is a total maximum daily load that we have for our streams and river segments for the Colorado River. Those are enforced by the EPA and by the state of Colorado, by the CDPHE. And so we have been assessed on Regulation 93 as some stream segments that have been impaired through the years. And recently, we have been given a draft TMDL that came in April of 2021. We were going through stakeholder processes for the last couple of years with CDPHE, and we just recently were given a draft of our TMDL. And what we did after we received the draft, we had 30 days to write a letter. We had a couple of stakeholder groups that got together, and they wrote a letter to the CDPHE, and Angie's going to summarize those. Can you hear the next slide? And so this, this is a little bit late. So we had a follow-up meeting with the CDPHE in 2021, or in June 2021, to tell them our concerns, go over our letter, tell them the problems that we were having, and that they would be reviewing that letter and seeing if they would change anything with the final TMDL. And the next bullet point says it's, we're anticipating the final TMDL, and that was just recently issued on Friday. That draft, that draft TMDL came out as a final TMDL. Those, that's going to affect us because the MS4 permit, when that gets renewed in 2020, that's going to affect us in our permit conditions. So Mesa County is the permit holder for all the MS4s in the valley. So that's Palisade, City of Grand Junction, Mesa County, and Fruta. We also have two nonstandards that have asked to come under the MS4 Phase II permit. So we'll be getting, in 2022, when they renew our permit, we'll be getting load allocations for the stream segments, which is going to include water sampling and reductions in those numbers. And we also have to come up with a watershed planning effort, and we're going through that stakeholder process now, but we're, that, that document needs to be also updated. So Shannon, if you wouldn't mind going. So like I said, it's a requirement of the Clean Water Act, and they prioritize those for fish habitat. And we're getting for our TMDL is for selenium, iron, and E. coli. In the next slide, you'll see, these are, and I'm sorry, it's, it's really small. I don't know if you can go, if it's zoom in a little bit. The black line is our urbanized boundary. And each of the blue lines and segments are the watersheds that the state is, was looking at, are looking at, and the sampling points of those. You can see a lot of the transects is from the north area, the book cliffs. And so we have our game implemented TMDLs for anything that's north of us. It's point source and non-point source, and point source is our urbanized, ways that we are urbanizing our areas. And then non-point sources are going to be agriculture, which right now is not, does not have, is not enforced upon their, we're asked, if they can just assist with us. And then if you go to the next slide, big salt wash and little salt wash are the main ones that intersect Fruta. And then if you go to the next slide for me, Shannon, that one shows where the urbanized boundary is for Fruta, and why those two watersheds are going to be important. And then, so if you want to go to the next slide, and I'm going to hand it over to Angie, and she's going to go in a little bit more of what's a TMDL and our, kind of our next steps.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Are you able to hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Great, well, thanks for having me and allowing me to be remote here in Glemmit Springs. So thank you, Carrie, for that introduction. And just a couple points. This is what I do a lot of, and there are a lot of acronyms. So if you want further explanation of a term or an acronym, please don't hesitate to, to ask us. We wanted to be, you know, big picture with enough information to capture your attention and help you understand the process, but respect your time as well, because we could talk a lot and for a long time about this topic. So don't hesitate to interject. So one point of clarification, so the draft public notice TMDL was issued in April, as Carrie said. We found out on Friday that the actual final document will be issued on the 10th of August. So the Water Quality Information Bulletin is, is a piece of information that the state issues and highlights a lot of permitting actions, and the TMDL won't actually be available to us until a week from now. So no, no information on if there were any accommodations or anything that changed from the draft or the final based upon our letter and meetings. But, okay, so big picture, a total maximum daily load. You can, you can consider it a planning tool. And so Carrie mentioned and showed you some images that had a lot of colored lines on them, and a lot of the colors are associated with a certain impairment. And in the water quality world, an impairment is essentially the water doesn't meet the standards that the state's established. And as she also pointed out, standards are really based upon how you use that water. So for instance, as you know, the Colorado River's, it's got a lot of protections for aquatic life. So aquatic life usually drive impairments for streams. Some streams in the state don't have aquatic listings, and they might have a recreational listing or grazing or an irrigation or stock water use. And so as you can imagine, as, you know, you've got different waters in different areas of our state, the standards aren't the same across the board necessarily, because it really depends on how we use that water. So when it comes to an impairment, the state's obligated to develop a total maximum daily load, and that's essentially a plan. And I'll show you a couple other images to try to help you visualize what a TMDL is. But there are multiple total maximum daily loads developed for multiple parameters. So for instance, Adobe and Leech Creek have an E. coli impairment. They will have E. coli total maximum daily loads. Other tributaries north of the Colorado River in your area have, for instance, some of them have selenium and total recoverable iron and E. coli. So that stream segment would, for instance, have three total maximum daily loads developed. So, and so we use these tools to help us plan on where we need to mitigate, or maybe try to voluntarily or through a permit that Carrie mentioned, like a stormwater permit, you might be required to help the stream by alleviating the contribution of contamination. So we use it as a guide. And as Carrie mentioned, if you have a permit, you really are in this point source category. And if you don't have a permit, to be simple, you might be, you're in a loading allocation or a non-point source category. So there are voluntary actions and non-voluntary actions required to clean this up, to get it back to, you know, the ideal health and meet water quality standards. So we'll move on to the next one. So here's a visual that I like to just show. So I like to envision a pie as a total maximum daily load. And the pie and the distribution, all these various segments is really dependent upon what, what the water is. And so the wasteland allocation category is a pool of permit, to be pretty simple. Stormwater permit, persiga wash, industrial discharges fall into those categories, and you can envision a pipe as a point source. That's pretty easy to go to. That segment of this total maximum daily load, when the state wants you to be responsible for cleaning up, has a permit. And so that, that sector has, there's a hook, a regulatory obligation, a compliance obligation, that permits will be revised to align with the total maximum daily load needs to clean up the water. Then you have the loading allocation, and that's the non-point sources such as agriculture, and just runoff from surface. And then I won't worry with the reserve capacity and the margin of safety, but they integrate those as well. So visually, wasteland allocations was again, those are the point source discharges. There are pipes, there are man-made dishes, there, you can, you know where that water is going into the system. The next one. And then the loading allocations, as I mentioned, you can envision just water coming off agricultural fields. And just once again, this is the piece of the total maximum daily load that's voluntary. There's no permit associated with these loadings. So this is just a snapshot of the total maximum daily load document, the report that came out in April. And as Carrie mentioned, there were comments submitted to the state regarding the content of this document. And if you go to the next slide, it just shows, the upper box is Grand Junction, Fruta, Grand Valley Water Users Association, and Mesa County submitted one common comment letter that I helped with, and we'll go over some of the issues there. And then just know that Colorado Stone, Sand, and Gravel Association also submitted a comment letter with pretty similar concerns. So this is a highlight of our concerns that we communicated in the letter. And these points really align with how the state goes through this whole process to come up with the information in the document that we looked at. So to be simple, we were concerned with how they assessed the sources of the pollution or contamination occurring, and how they distributed responsibility of where those contamination sources were coming from. And then they go into an implementation schedule and obligation among those loading parties. And we'll explain a little bit more about some of those things. But if I had to, you know, say, if you asked me what the primary concerns were, I would, I would tell you that that's, this is what they are. And if we wanted to drill down into each one of the bullets, I could expand on a source assessment concern relates to really hitting home on, the next slide, please, the data. So they, they call for data, they ask for data. The state actually also does their own data collection from a water quality perspective. We aligned our review of data over the last three years in this effort, knowing it was coming with USGS. And there's a very poor data set. It's not really even meeting the expectations that they would have of you in an instance, if you wanted your data considered. So we have some concerns there. They're not really characterizing the base flow that just occurs in a non-precipitation event during an irrigation and a non-irrigation season. That's really important in your area. They don't actually have a flow with a concentration collected at the same point, at the same time, which equates to a load. So where, there's a need to integrate better data. It was our primary concern. And that just limits our ability to try to identify who can help reduce the loading, right? If you don't know really ideally that it's characterized well, then are you going to want to invest money and spending on reducing a pollution load in your area if you don't know that it's really being determined accurately with good science and good data? The next slide just highlights some of the, how they allocated. So in this document, there are actually seven permities within the Grand Valley area that will potentially have an obligation from a permitting and regulatory mechanism to do their part in that bigger segment of that circle, that pie that I showed you. Grand Valley Water Users Association, for instance, does have a stormwater permit. And it's kind of confusing to even understand why an agricultural sector has a permit in a stormwater, but that's another conversation. But regardless, they do have a permit, they were identified as having responsibility. For instance, to Indian Wash, well, once somebody diverts onto their field near Indian Wash, Grand Valley Water Users really has no ability to mitigate that water, once it comes off the field. And there were some pretty firm assignments for their responsibility. Same with Mesa County, they had some allocations too. And so that black line that Carrie showed you is really important in your area, because for your stormwater permit, that black line kind of confines where the stormwater permit is actually applicable. So there were requirements associated with the stormwater permit for Mesa County and others that were outside of that line. So anyway, too much information, but these are some of our concerns. And once again, base flow loadings, irrigation, non-irrigation. The BLM property upstream of the government-highline canal, as you know, has some pretty unique geology and contributes selenium during stormwater events too. So we need to understand the background loadings to your area. And then the final was just, it's really hard to understand who's responsible for what. Irrigation versus non-irrigation, and they were mischaracterized as far as how your system works down there. So without that, I won't, I won't bore you with the details. And then the next slide is, I like this slide, and I put it in here. I don't know if you have a copy of the presentation. I'm not going to read through it, but I just really like, you know, what we really highlighted in this letter to the division. And, you know, if I had to take away one request that I think is important, it's to delay the final implementation of the TMDL, because it goes to EPA. So next week, they're going to issue the final TMDL. We have 30 days to comment. And then they can consider our comments, they don't have to integrate them. But then they send that document to EPA, and it's pretty much, I don't want to say stamped and sealed, but then permits will be changed to accommodate that information. So next week is going to be important for us to really do, you know, a strong, hard look at the language there to see if anything changed based upon our letter and these concerns here that were expressed and requested. We did request a three-year delay. We committed to providing annual reports. We committed to providing them updates as they wanted, kind of like a condition of approval sort of thing. So we'll see where it goes. I'm an optimist, but I'm not really certain how our comments will be considered and how much the draft to the final will change. Okay, next slide. So just all in all, this, after a TMDL is developed, it's the permits that have to be modified to accommodate a water quality standard or a permit obligation, and they're not self-implementing. So it's really up to the local stakeholders for those voluntary non-point source elements to band together and, you know, try to, you know, share in the costs, share in some water quality analysis, or maybe some property for, you know, mitigating a situation. So there's this watershed planning effort that's been going on since 2017. And you can go to the next slide. So Grand Valley Drainage District actually is acting as a fiscal sponsor for a grant that the CDPHE awarded them to develop a watershed plan. So there's been a watershed plan in the Grand Valley since about 2002. It focused on the Lower Guinnesson for many, many, many years, and now we're shifting and updating this, the 2012 version to reflect Grand Valley conditions. So that is ongoing, as Carrie mentioned. We've had several stakeholder meetings. We've had several technical advisory committee meetings. And where it stands is, we're working with USGS. They developed a long-term water quality monitoring strategy as a kind of a near-term action that the Grand Valley area can take. And they're really solid in their science, they're solid in their statistics. They recommended some gaps within the Grand Valley area that can be filled with additional flow and quality data to try to help get a better understanding of the sources, the loadings, the timing of the loadings, et cetera. So that's where we're at. It's my job right now to compile USGS's monitoring strategy recommendations and start to assign some costs for what that would look like over the one, two, three-year timeframe to help stakeholders, Fruta, Grand Junction, anyone that's interested in participating, sharing maybe some of the costs to get better data for these water quality things. And so it's not just the TMDL that drives the need for this action. It's just the long-term regulations continue to get tighter. As you know, our water volume in our waters is declining. The water we have now is being influenced heavily by debris flows from post-fire situations. So it's not going to go away, and it just, you know, is, you know, kind of spearheading and driving the need to collaborate better. So, and that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Angie. Does anybody have any questions for Angie or Carrie? Go ahead, Matthew.
So I'm, I'm a little confused. So we have non-point source, let's say selenium that comes into our watershed area, but those non-point sources are on federal, are federal lands. But yet we're still responsible, or will be held responsible for cleaning that up?
Yes, once it hits our urbanized boundary.
Carrie, did you want to step up to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. I feel like I talked really loud anyways. Once, once it hits our urbanized boundary, we are responsible for it, if it hits that watershed.
Okay, even though this point source is not ours, okay. Are there other regulations from, coming from the EPA, like zero discharge laws and things like that, that will impact this?
No, this is the biggest one that I can see coming. And I think the biggest takeaway from this, and I think Angie kind of hit on it, if we can make the change now and get better data and understand this TMDL better, the better off we're going to be. But once it's in our permit, it's going to be really hard to get rid of. So it's going to be important to get the change now.
Gotcha, thank you.
Do your letters go with, with the TMDL to the, the EPA? Or do they, do they not?
We did send it to the EPA. And I think, Angie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we also sent it, sent it to Congress. Do you remember who we also CC'd?
You know, I don't recall who else. I know that EPA was copied. But I'm, I wouldn't doubt that they sent it to other, you know, parties, since it's public information, water quality control commissioners. So, you know, you know, I don't know who asked the question. But there are, there are needs from a regulatory perspective for other users in your area. For instance, there's a regulation called Regulation 85, and that really targets nutrients, specifically nitrogen and phosphorus compounds. So it is likely that once the state gets more information and data regarding these concentrations in water bodies, they could establish standards, they could realize standards are exceeded. So the agricultural community, for instance, is very aware and keeping a strong, close look at how Regulation 85 would impact their operations and the tailwater that comes off their property into receiving waters. So there, it's a constant process to try to stay on top of. But I'm optimistic with, you know, using TMDL conversation as a really good driver to get everyone up and engaged in collaborating, so.
And I think to go off of that a little bit more, there's PFAS, which is, I'm not even going to try to, you know, the acronym, but that's also for the wastewater treatment facilities, but it's the bigger wastewater treatment facilities. I don't think Fruta's in that category yet. I don't think Fruta's in that category yet.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just want to know if you guys would be following up with us so we would know the results of that final report and, and it sounds like.
Happy to.
And Kimberly has been very involved too. So we'll, you know, continue to feed information to her, but we'd be happy to come back anytime.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in and, uh, giving us a little more information.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks.
Thanks for great explanations. That was a lot of information that you disseminated very nicely.
It was a lot. Yeah. All right. Thanks for your ears and your, your retention. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. With that, we're going to move into our public participation time. Uh, this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issue and will not take official action under this section. Uh, we'd ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. And, uh, if you want to, uh, leave a comment, you need to state your name and address for the record. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? If you'd please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Matt Barber at 334 Crystal Court, and they left. Well done in that presentation. That's tough stuff to follow right there. So, um, but first off, I want to thank you folks for your service, for your time that you put in here. Uh, it is not easy. It is demanding, but thank you so much for what you do. And I would just like to, um, just take a second to pray, to bless each of you, to bless our town, uh, in prayer. So Father God, I thank you so much for today. Thank you for, uh, the community that we live in. Thank you for this wonderful place that you've given us to, to live, to reside, to enjoy, to raise our children here if we have them. Thank you that it is a place that encourages us, that allows us to feel safe, that allows us to grow as people and as a community. And I thank you for the men and women who are on this council. Thank you for their desire to serve, their desire to take care of this community, for taking on a mantle of responsibility that, uh, very few seek to do. Father, that they have put themselves in a leadership role. Father, whether they feel capable or not, that they have undertaken this, uh, this role, this purpose and, uh, these efforts. And I ask that you would bless each and every one of them as they, uh, take on all these things. I pray that you would bless their businesses, uh, if they work, Father, their employees, their bosses, just whoever it might be that you would bless them in that regard, that you would bless their families, uh, husbands, wives, partners, children, whatever it might be that they would be, uh, taken care of, that they would be encouraged and full of life. Father, thank you for, um, just their lives, uh, the men and women, their lives here. Thank you for, uh, just the health that you, uh, that you have given them, whether they see it as fully healthy or not. Father, they are here, they are functioning, and, uh, Father, they are exhibiting life. So I ask that you would give them wisdom. I ask that you would give them discernment, Father, that they would be able to understand all the things that have been placed before them, uh, even including the presentation they just heard. I pray that you would give them discernment to know what to do, to make the decisions that are right, to make the decisions that might be tough, but the decisions that are true to the wisdom that you've given them. And I pray that they would have courage to stand strong behind their convictions, behind their decisions, that no matter what might come against them, no matter what kind of, um, discouragement that they might experience, that they would have a courage to stand, uh, stand firm and to stand true and to continue to lift up our community. And, uh, I just thank you so much for, uh, these men and women and for this city that we live in. And I pray this in the name of Yeshua HaMashiach, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on something on this? All right. If you please step up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Kelly Hamlin, 1222 Periwinkle. Um, I moved to Fruta last fall. And, um, I know this might not be the city's purview, but, um, it'd be really nice if we had a, um, cell phone tower out at K and L Road area. Since moving here, um, I have constant drop calls and bad reception. I heard last month Fruta got a, I don't know, rural economic development grant. I don't know if, um, I know cell phone towers are private, but maybe the city could incentivize some of the providers. We plan our phone calls to friends and making appointments when we drive into Junction. Cause I can't get reception at the house. Um, so I just thought I'd put it out there. Of course, I could drive to, according to our cell phone towers, I could drive out to Mac and get really good. So, um, but anyway, I, again, you know, I know those are providers, um, but I don't know if there's anything that the city might be able to incentivize to get some better cell phone reception out there at K and L Road. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kelly. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? If you'd please step up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mark Young. I live at 2942 Erica Road in Grand Junction, Colorado, 81504. So I come before you as a concerned citizen of Mesa County and a, a neighbor of the city of Fruta. Uh, my daughter and her husband and my grandson live in Fruta as well as many friends. So I just come before you to, uh, thank you for the opportunity to come before you and pray. You know, you opened up with a, with a, a really good, uh, extension of the city of Fruta's willingness to, uh, allow us to, uh, come forth and pray. I just want to reference, uh, a sticker that, uh, an evangelist gave to me last night that was headed back to Las Vegas uh, after meeting at the Stanford Constitution in, in Grand Junction. Prayer changes things, as referenced in the Old Testament book of Second Chronicles, chapter seven, verse 14. But the verse that comes to my heart that I'd like to share this evening is John 3:16, which is held up many times in football games. And as referenced in the old King James Version Bible, it is this. "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever shall believe in him shall not perish, but have everlasting life." What a wonderful promise that is. Let us pray. O dear heavenly Father, Lord God Almighty, Almighty Yahweh, as we bow our hearts before your holy throne this evening, we give you thanks first and foremost for the breath of life that you gave each and every one of us when we were born. Thank you for the continuation of that breath of life. I pray, Lord, that you will guide, direct, bless and protect this sitting council as well as others across our Grand Valley and beyond. Lord God, we need a leadership that is, uh, willing to stand up for what is right. Grant them the intestinal fortitude to, uh, fulfill their obligations and uphold the will of the people, and more importantly, the will of God. For thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven, dear heavenly Father. And we thank you for that. Lord God, I pray that you will, uh, bless each and every council member and mayor and their families, their friends, their neighbors here in the city of Fruta as well as the surrounding communities. Lord God, we need you and we thank you for this opportunity. For we are still one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And I thank you for that. I thank you for this time to pray for these things that I do, say and ask in the precious and holy name of Jesus Christ, Almighty Yeshua. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? All right. Hearing none, we're going to close the, uh, public participation and bring it on to the consent agenda. Uh, these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. These items will be approved by a single motion of the council. Uh, so with this, we're going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to comment on something on the consent agenda? All right. Hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring you back to council. Are there any questions or do we have a motion?
I move we, uh, accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Perhaps we should amend the motion to include the addition of the appointment of Julie Lynch to the planning commission. Move the consent agenda as amended.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I, uh, okay.
Move to.
I, we, we move to, uh, accept the, uh, consent agenda as amended. Second.
Thank you. Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Breeman?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our public hearings. Uh, so we've got two quasi judicial hearings tonight. Um, our first one is a special event liquor permit application, a request to approve an application from the Fruta Rotary Club to serve beer at the Mike the Headless Chicken Festival in Civic Center Memorial Park on Friday, August 27th, 2021. Deb, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Deputy City Clerk Deb Woods, and I'm presenting the special event liquor permit application submitted by the Fruta Rotary Club to serve beer at the Mike the Headless Chicken Festival. The Rotary has been serving beer at this event since it began in 1999. This year, the festival will be held on Friday, August 27th and Saturday, August 28th at Civic Center Memorial Park. The Rotary is requesting a permit to sell beer from 3:00 to 10:00 PM on Friday and 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Saturday. A diagram of the proposed beer tent with the licensed premises outlined in red was included in the council packet. The area will be enclosed with metal fencing and Rotary's application states that Rotarians will monitor the four entrances marked on the diagram to make sure no alcohol enters or leaves the area. IDs will be checked by Rotarians and those over 21 will receive a wristband indicating that they have been ID'd and that they are of legal age. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the Rotary's application and issued a statement that there is nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. So it is staff's recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved subject to the following conditions. The Rotary will so, be solely responsible for the enforcement of liquor laws and all other procedures, uh, presented by the Rotary will be followed. That concludes my presentation. Event manager for the Rotary Club, Lou Mudd, is present in the audience this evening. Lou, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'm Lou Mudd. I live at, uh, 126 South Maple Street. And I've been obtaining the beer permits for festivals in Fruta for a really long time. We always have a good track record of, uh, safety and service and, uh, certainly, uh, don't anticipate any incidences coming up with, uh, the fun at Mike the Headless Chicken Days. Just like every other festival, uh, we do a pretty good job serving beer and it, uh, helps us provide a lot of, um, contributions to worthwhile, uh, needs in the community. So I appreciate your consideration. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Lou. Uh, with that, we're going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right. Hearing none, I'll bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions?
And I'll just recuse myself since I'm a member of the club.
All right. All right. Do your drinking club?
Beer serving.
Oh, different.
Serving.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Uh, I'll move that we approve the special event liquor permit application, uh, from, uh, the Fruta Rotary Club to sell beer and, uh, at the Mike the Headless Chicken Festival at the Civic Center Memorial Park on Friday, August 27th and Saturday, August 28th.
Second.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Breeman?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we're going to be moving into our second, uh, hearing, which is the Red Cliffs Three Preliminary, uh, Planned Unit Development, uh, and Henry's going to be presenting on this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, bear with me while I share my screen here for the presentation. All right. So as mentioned, this is the Red Cliffs Three, uh, subdivision. It's a preliminary PUD plan. And again, my name is Henry and for the record, uh, I'd just like to enter the PowerPoint, uh, into the record. So application 2021-19, uh, Red Cliffs Three, it's a preliminary PUD plan located at 280 Clements Way. Uh, the current zone is planned unit development, and this is a request for approval of a preliminary PUD plan for eight single-family lots on approximately 1.1 acres. Uh, legal notice occurred on June 23rd and 24th, uh, well within the 15-day minimum requirement set forth, uh, by Section 17.01, point 130. Uh, you can see the, the photo to the bottom right is the public notice sign that goes on the property. And then this bu- buffer map, which shows, uh, the properties highlighted in blue who received, uh, public notice postcards for this application tonight and for the planning commission meeting. Uh, the subject property is located on the, uh, east side of Highway 340, uh, in the Red Cliffs, um, mobile home subdivision and just north of the Fruta Bike Park here, uh, as the zoning map depicts this, uh, bright green color as, uh, uh, community services and recreation. Just to the north, uh, is essentially the CoCapelli Commercial Center, which is zoned, uh, Commercial Two or C2 is the acronym. And you can see here in this aerial photograph, the location of the subject property. Here is a, uh, preliminary layout of the, uh, landscape plan. Feel like it's a little bit easier to, uh, read and understand what the proposal is as opposed to the site plan or the utility plan, which shows lots of different lines and different places, uh, representing the elements within the subdivision. So here you can see there's a common parking area here, uh, on the, uh, east side and the south side, approximately 22 spaces, um, and eight lots in total, as referenced before. There is proposed some additional landscaping as more or less a buffer between the street and the dwelling units, uh, which the applicant fell was, uh, a nice added addition to the subdivision that we don't normally see. The land use code, uh, contains a set of 15 criteria that must be met for planning at developments. I am not going to necessarily go through all 15, make it a very long, uh, presentation, but, um, do want to enter into the record and let it known for the public who, who may be in attendance. Uh, the staff report does go into more detail about those review criteria. And I'd be glad to answer any questions the council might have that might be appropriate at that time. But the approval criteria that must be considered, uh, by the planning commission and the council in its review, shall be approved, uh, if the council is satisfied, uh, with those approval criteria and that they, uh, don't, uh, deviate from specific health, safety and welfare standards set forth in our municipal code. Uh, the review comments, uh, have all been included with the staff report and have been entered into the record with your packet. Uh, staff did meet with the applicant and the, the developer and property owner with regards to the comment that staff had with regards to, uh, the, the, the recommended height for the structures. It wasn't called out in their PUD guide, but it's, uh, uh, staff took the approach of calling one out so that they would remember to essentially address it at some time when the, uh, actual ordinance comes before you uh, after this application. And so it's under, uh, staff comments, PUD guide 6A. His staff recommends a height of no more than 20 feet. Uh, smaller height would be supported as well. Again, the applicant and staff met, um, and the applicant requested that it be 25 instead of 20 and staff can support that as well, but no more than obviously 35, which we understand is the kind of standard height that we have in our code. With regards to public comments, uh, no written public comments have been received by staff at this time. The planning commission recommended approval of five to zero at their July 13th public hearing with no public comments received at that meeting. And with that, to conclude the presentation, Mr. Mayor, staff, uh, recommends approval of the proposed Red Cliff. approval of the proposed Red Cliffs III preliminary PUD plan with the condition that all review comments and issues identified in the staff report be adequately resolved.
All right. Thank you, Henry. The applicant here?
Just like a PowerPoint, short 20 or 30 minute. Where's your computer?
Mayor Kincaid and council members. And first off, thank you, Henry, for a great presentation. It's very complete. I really don't have anything to add to that. We're, we're interested and excited in moving the project forward. Right now, we're really, this is at the zoning application stage. And for, for a PUD, we provide a level of detail that's much greater than what you would have for a typical zoning. But we are not into the engineering phase. So this is not the subdivision stage yet. That's what we'll be going to next. So welcome any questions, and we're certainly interested in doing something a little bit innovative on this piece of property.
All right. Well, thank you. We'll come back to you on that. We're going to open up to public comment first. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? All right. Hearing none, I'll bring you back to council.
I have a question. Who's going to be responsible for the parking lot? Is that going to be HOA maintained?
Yeah. So they, so this site that we're, that we're developing on the 1.25 acres approximately will have a sub HOA. So the Red Cliffs HOA is still, is still under the governance of the entire subdivision. This will have its own HOA that's responsible for the parking lot and also for the landscaping that's within the boundaries of the site.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on this? All right.
I do have one question. I see a discussion about short-term rentals. Are these, are these planned to be short-term rentals? Or just the possibility of that?
I think it's the possibility. I think right now, the plan is that they would, they'd be able to be short-term rentals. It'd be a for-sale product. So the buyer would have that option.
Gotcha. Okay.
And they're planned to be a modular option. But one of the questions that was asked, would stick-built be considered? And it, and it would. And I think that's what led to the discussion about if we were going to stick, if homes are going to be stick-built, we wanted some flexibility on being able to go a little bit higher than the 20 feet. So that's where that came from.
And it was the Red Cliffs HOA that approved that short-term rentals could, that those units could be used for short-term rentals, correct?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. And the question was?
You consulted the HOA of Red Cliffs to get that permission from?
At an annual meeting, just talked about the project and conceptually what we wanted to do. And then we went back to the board at a later date and got the board's blessing, so to speak. And I think you have a copy of that letter that we received in your packet.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right. Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the proposed Red Cliffs III preliminary PUD plan with the condition that all review comments and issues identified be adequately resolved at the final plat application.
I'll second.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we're, we don't have anything on our administrative agenda. Are you doing the city manager's report, Shannon? Or is Margaret? Is Margaret? Who's, who's acting? I don't know which one is in charge.
I've been on vacation last week, so. Shannon didn't tell me of any major obstacles or disasters every weekend, so I have nothing to report.
All right. We're going to move into council reports and actions. We're going to start down here with Matthew.
Really, the only thing to note within GJEAP is that Robin Brown has turned in her letter of resignation for GJEAP. She'll be moving over to the university as their president of the foundation. So I'm sure there's going to be a lot more discussion on what we're doing forward.
All right. Thank you. Heather?
Planning Commission, we saw that presentation that you just saw, and Parks and Rec was canceled yesterday.
All right. And you appointed somebody new to planning?
And we appointed someone new to planning, but she's left, and she seems wonderfully informed and has actually read our bios. She quoted our bios back to us in the interview. So she knows everything. And I was like, you, there's one person. There's one person who's read them all. So I think she's going to be a great addition to Planning Commission.
Okay. Ken?
Nothing for me.
All right. You've been on vacation, too?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Last Thursday, I had the, the honor and privilege of presenting about the Wellspring Project and arts and culture in general in Fruita at the Colorado County and City Managers' Emerging Manager Summer Camp Annual Conference.
And the acronym is?
It's, it's called the emerging, well.
CCCMA, Emerging Manager.
And that, that was really cool. I also got to sit in on a presentation from Martine Carcasson from CSU. And he is the head of the department that is public deliberation, which is kind of engaging the public process a little bit more directly. And it was really like a very inspiring presentation. And I don't know, I threw out the idea that it'd be cool to have him come in or, or present to us via Zoom sometime, if, if everybody was into that. But it was, it's pretty cool. It was just talking about trying to build that sense of trust with your, with your community and presenting a forum for more very intentional sort of deliberation about projects in the community and really any issue that comes up. But that was really cool. The only other thing I have to report is, I guess, historic preservation met yesterday, and they're continuing to plan to participate at the Fall Festival, having some history displays at Cavalcade, and also looking at partnering, moving forward with Moon Farm in some ways about talking about history in the, the lower valley. So that's what I've got.
Thanks, Kyle. Karen?
The only thing that, that I have is the museum meeting. We had a really great presentation from the collections manager and just the big job of going through everything and over, you know, decades. And they're getting organized. She was really amazing. And I'm sorry, I don't know her name. The good thing, financials look good for, for the museum. So, you know, survived COVID and, and are in a pretty good way. So, yeah.
Lori?
GBT meets Tuesday. Mike is covering that for me. And if the stars align, I will not be here at the next meeting. That's it.
If the stars align, huh?
All right.
All right. I, all my meetings are upcoming here, so I don't have anything to report at this time either. So with that, we are going to adjourn at 7:58 p.m.